Okay.
A little bit after?
Six o'clock, excuse me.
Six o'clock, excuse me. First in, would you please repeat the compliance?
Yes, sir. In accordance with the South Carolina Code of Laws 1976, Section 30-4-80D, as amended, notification of meeting and the meeting agenda were posted within 24 hours prior to the meeting on the County Council Building at a publicly accessible place on the county website, and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local community and all persons or organizations requesting notification, and it was also posted at the location of the meeting at the City Hall of the City of Argyle.
Thank you very much. We will stand for the flag of allegiance and Mr. Ral will be first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day, thank you for time to come together to make decisions. The best service is Jasper County. Thank you for guidance, wisdom, and assurance as we do these things. And Father, we also pray for those throughout the state that are being impacted by these wildfires, that you will help alleviate them and give the resources needed to provide service and coverage. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to have approval for the consent agenda, or motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
I'd like to amend it to show the minutes of February 27th and 28th Strategic Planning Meeting to be listed on the consent agenda. And it was in the E packet. Do I have it?
Motion to amend the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of this consent agenda? A motion to approve? I'm getting confused here, but just repeat your motion to approve consent agenda.
Make a motion to be approved, the consent agenda with those items just stated?
Just second?
Second.
All in favor say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Approve the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Motion to approve the regular agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any comment? All in favor say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
There are no proclamations. Presentation, Danny Lucas, Volunteer Park Baseball Field Update.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lucas is currently out and in his stead. Jim, I want to keep a brief update on JRYB field because I'll take a moment to tell you that Jim and his crew did a lot of the work in-house and saved a lot of money after trying to procure some of the items. We realized that was a better way to go and we're very glad it heated up. Thank you, Jim.
So we had an opportunity with Public Works to make some improvements out there to the ball fields. Jeff Crosby and Olin Roberts kind of coordinated everything out there for the county. What we ended up doing is replaced all the dugout roofs out there. We also cleaned the building, power washed the outside, cleaned the bathrooms and got them up to usable condition for this upcoming season. And then we're currently replacing the steps going up to the press box. That will be completed a week from this Friday, is what I'm told by the contractor that's doing that work for us. We also repaired the fences around the outfield and updated and made sure the gates were working so that you could lock the fields and secure the fields at night. So that work was done. I know Mr. Lucas is working on some improvements to be made to the fields themselves. He's got requests for proposals out there for contractors to bring in some materials to improve the infield. We also took a look at the sprinkling system and working on trying to address that because there's some repairs that need to be made to the sprinkling system out there. And that's basically what has been done and what we're looking at. The building itself needs some repairs and I know Mr. Lucas is also working on a long-term plan to repair the building out there. Any questions I can answer for the council, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Ral?
I do have a couple of questions. Kudos, first off, to you all for getting the repairs and everything done, much needed out there. Second thing is you all are coordinating with JWRB to make sure that if you do bring in material in there, that it won't impact the upcoming ball season and kind of work around that. And then thirdly, do you all do the PM and other maintenance out there regularly, or how is that done?
That has not been, my understanding, part of what the county has done. Mr. Lucas is looking at that operation and talking with the baseball organization out there and is currently discussing that with them, and I do not know where those discussions are at this point in time.
No other questions?
I've been out there a couple of times and the upgrades looked really good and Nolan and everybody's done a good job. I've had some discussion with some of the board members and some of the families whose kids play out there and they're very excited about what's been done and what's coming as well. So the one question I have is the PA system. Have y'all taken a look at that?
I know Corey from Parks and Rec was looking into that. I did not get an update from him this morning when I talked to him on that, but I know he was looking at it, making sure that was in working order.
Has some work been done on the field where the clay is?
What our folks did internally is we tilted it up and then dragged it and got it in the condition that it could be played on. And again, my understanding is the youth baseball organization is...
They've already started.
Yes, started out there and doing some additional stuff to make the field a little bit easier to take their own blows off of.
Thank you.
Counselor Zell? I'd just like to say it looks like administration and you were kind of seeing a trend where y'all are doing a little bit more than feasible in-house. I think that's a smart move.
Mr. Van Geesel?
I just want to thank you for helping Danny out, getting things moving. Appreciate it.
I thank you and always said, just say one word and you seem to be doing it. And Danny Lucas, it's a must say. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Citizen comments. Has anybody signed up for citizen comments?
You passed over your comments.
I don't have any comments. Okay. Quincy Bentley?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and way you live.
Quincy Bentley Lee, 19 equals 100. So a couple of weeks ago, when we were doing a reading for consideration of ordinance 0202504, I asked a question in regards to how it was going to impact people with aris property and so on and so forth. And the reason I asked that is because a lot of these rules are being changed and not considering how it was going to impact just a regular citizen trying to do something. So right now, I'm trying to get cut off an acre of land, my family property. So it got denied because they said I needed to put, do a road first. Okay, so fine. I said, okay, well, I'll get the road done. So I contacted the city, the state, to get a driveway put in. So they denied it because they said, I need a plaque, I need a deed, and I need a sub tank permit. So how do I get that without the plat approved? So that was the reason that I asked that question before because a lot of these rules are being changed and we're not considering, and it seems minor at the time, but then the regular, run-of-the-mill citizen comes to do something and we can't get it done because we get ran in circles. And I went to the DOT today and said, hey, is there a workaround that I could get just so that I can get the driveway put in, just so I can get the road done, so that I can get the plat approved? And they said, no, there's no workaround for that. So what am I supposed to do? How do I get the plat approved? If I can't get the road, if I can't get the driveway to get the road, the road done?
If you would, Mr. Fulmer, would you try to help the gentleman?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Resolutions. It's a consideration of Resolution 2025-14 for the retention of services from Finger, Melick, Brooks, and LaBruce, PA. Mr. Tetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. As we discussed in a workshop just a few minutes ago and went over this, this resolution, if it's passed, would allow the execution of an agreement for outside legal services from the law firm to assist with the review of the code's enforcement ordinances and the various different parts of our code. The end product would be a set of amendments dealing with code's enforcement process and scope of our officers out there with a view toward the Phase Two, which is not part of this contract, to take direction from the council as to what order, priority on certain items you might want to address with substantive changes, whether that's animal control, litter control, stormwater, whatever it might be. I think they did a decent job of explaining what the scope of our first deliverable would be. It would be the recommendation of myself and the administration to look favorably at this to get us moving down a path for getting a better and more efficient set of forces to deal with the ever-rising number of problems we have with code's enforcement. I'm happy to answer any questions that might still be out there. I actually have representatives of law firms, as you know, that can ask specific questions that I can't, that I might not be able to.
Are there any discussion? Van Geesel?
I think my main concern is, you know, not having any idea what the cost is going to be under the initial cost, not whether that can be resolved, but it's that open-ended document.
If I might digress, Mr. Chairman, what we discussed at the workshop was, we had had a meeting about, with the administration and the law firm to discuss the fact that there was a question about how open it was. So the proposal that's put before us has a specific set of deliverables in Phase One for the flat fee of 10.5, which includes review of the ordinances, making amendments for the council to consider to deal with the process and the other matters. When it comes to the next phase, which is open ended because we don't know, there's not going to be any movement until you then authorize additional movement, that would be, as the example we use, whether we wanted to look at the running at large animal ordinance, make specific changes there, go to the litter control, make specific changes there, taking our underlying substantive ordinance that we're enforcing would be within Phase Two. The process, consistency with state law, consistency internally with who's doing what and when and how is what Phase One is. So that's been a more clear delineation of what the deliverable is on Phase One. Phase Two, not authorized at this point, that would come back to y'all for an additional, as they said, whether it's in-house, out-of-house, RFQs to everybody else out there, collaborative effort with, working with Beaufort County, Hampton County, whatever, that would be up for the council's decision after the first deliverable.
I understand the complexity of it and the target. I understand it is a concern, though.
Mr. Fulmer?
Yeah, I still have a few concerns with this. I do think that, I think we need to clearly define who's doing what before we go down this pathway to clean the ordinances up with this. I'm 100% advocate for making sure that code enforcement is done, done correctly, but I think we need to, in my opinion, make sure that it's clearly delineated who is doing what before we go down this pathway, that we don't leave any stone unturned, because I'm still just not fully settled on this.
I'm not certain how to answer that, other than I, we've worked on this since November. The administration and myself don't feel like we have the, I don't see the experience, that's not the word I want to use. We don't have the exposure that other law firms have had in code's enforcement and dealing with the various interlocking mechanisms out there between that to do it efficiently and as expeditiously as I think the council wanted to. I don't know how I could change the language around. If I had a suggestion of what it is that you're looking for, I'd do it, but...
I guess we got...
Well, I think that with Mr. Ral, it's not that we don't need this, it's just that we don't know, we get, we're confused. They keep on bringing up different things at different times. Before it was Stage One, Stage Two, Stage Three. Now they seem to combine something, but it seems to be a mixture. What is the end product? We still don't know the end product. I don't, it's not very clear. And that's what we're afraid of. We need it, we desperately need it, but we're not going to throw money out just to say we need it. And I know it's a difficult thing. I can't impress, if I could say yes and have a full confidence that the money's well-spent, it's well-spent, but not, we don't know that yet. I don't know that I could sit here and tell you that after full examination of the codes, I can tell you how many articles or sections will need to be fixed, because I have to look at the fire code, the building code, the zoning and land development regulations, and look at all the different things out there, look at our animal control ordinances, and look at all of those things, and try and come up with who's supposed to be doing what and when. I just know it's very complex, having had experience recently with an incident over the summer where we had a problem with both the fire codes, planning, building, all involving young children in a daycare. We've had a recent one where we've got both the state involved, Public Works, land development, all those things, trying to figure out, as we say, how do we address it? How do we identify, number one, where the different problems are, which is something we started in November, actually, I think it was October, when we sat down with Mr. LaBruce and said, okay, let's bring in our staff people and see what, and define what they think their jobs are and what their job is not. And that's when we began to really understand that we had the problem, because there's a different understanding between the different departments as to who does what and when. And a disconcerted approach or disconnected approach is what we're trying to avoid. If y'all think that we can dress this up better, I'm happy to do that. I'm just not sure what the ultimate product that you want is besides you will get a set of orders, is that amendments that will identify what sections need to be done to identify who does what with each different enforcement problem, who's in charge of it, and what the outcome is. Personally, personally, this is personally, I think that what confuses everyone is, look at the ordinances, then look at who's doing the, who's protecting or protecting the ordinances. And if we just say, let's look at the ordinances, it's fairly obvious that code enforcement is code enforcement. It's not fire, right? It's not building, it's code enforcement. And we may not be that way, but let's get one done before the other. Mr. Ral brought out, okay, let's do the opposite way. Let's get a report on delineating who does what. The ordinances mean nothing until we not find that out. I think that's what you were saying?
Yeah.
So this is where it's confusion, and we don't want to be, we don't want to be confused. We want to be clear on what we did. That's mine. It's needed, we know it's needed, we all agree on that. I think the disagreement comes in is how do we do it? And what product are we going to get for our 10,000? We're still looking at the opportunity of opening it, we're opening the hood and looking in and saying, okay, this is what you need and this is what it's going to cost you. Are you suggesting that you would like the administration to ask them to refine the proposal, to look at it in the way you just said about defining what the current ordinances say whose areas of responsibility are and what do we take to fix that before we get into the next part of it, which is, here's the problematic problems of the substantive ordinance that says what each of them is supposed to be doing?
I, that if we look at it maybe, I don't know, if we, at a staff level or maybe a workshop level, that we do it together with, but it's more of a staff level thing when it comes to job descriptions, to figure out who is tasked with what, and then the ordinances are developed or tweaked to make sure that it empowers them within their job description to be able to enforce the ordinance.
I had thought that's what they were offering to do.
And see, this is where I'm confused.
If I, I'd rather have them, I don't want to be speaking for them of what they are visioning. I would rather them answer the question directly, if you don't mind.
No. Chris, you got it?
I was just going to say, we have to start somewhere. You know, and I think having a look at the ordinance first and see where we're going and see who needs to be put in those places, to me, seems like the way it should be set up. I mean, there's a lot to look at, there's a lot of stuff, and I think we need to let them go through it first and clean it up, is my opinion.
Our Doc?
Still a question. If we consider this resolution favorable with Phase One, that gives you, as John said, to look under hood, and then you'll have a better idea of what Phase Two would entail. Because if we approve Phase One, is that, are we obligated beyond what we talked about in Phase One, as far as pricing or anything? And then after Phase One, you'd have a better idea of what Phase Two looks like as far as pricing? I know you can't say now, you won't know, but you'll have a chance to look at things and have a good idea what Phase Two would be after you've done Phase One, or not?
Yes, sir, Councilman. And one of the things, while we're here a second time, is we heard your concerns the first time about that phased approach. It was convoluted. So I know this seems like an amendment to the original proposal, but if you kind of toss the, toss that first one away, what we did instead was try to identify exactly what we would recommend based off of what administration expressed, be the concern of code enforcement, recommend the first approach. And that is, exactly as you have said, is looking at the roles and responsibilities of the various code enforcement officers, and also at the same time, going through the code and identifying the sections that need to be changed to empower them to do their jobs. That's all Phase One. You're going to get amendments at the end of Phase One. You're going to get or proposed amendments to your ordinance at the end of, you know, called Phase One. But this, after that, you can continue to use our firm if you so desire to. You can do things in-house. We're also going to provide you with recommendations of ordinance, of areas of weakness in your code that we think compared to other communities and localities that we represent and what we see across the state. So it could be something like, you know, wetlands protections, it could be something like animal control that we've talked about. All of those are, you know, they can explode into a much more expensive cost, so we don't want to have to deal with those yet. We're not even going to bring those up. You may find it, you're better suited going out to another third party or doing it in-house. So to answer your question, this is, this is only, you are not bound to us by anything beyond this, and what we are limiting, and we're capping the cost, so that it is, you know exactly what you're going to have to pay for us to provide this to you. So we wanted to clarify those after the first, the first meeting.
So the work product is ours?
The work product is yours, yes, sir.
Mr. Fulmer, would you like to inject something here since the staff...
Sure, I'd be happy to. I just wanted to reiterate that this isn't a proposal that we received blindly and came to you. We've been working with them to try to craft it, and based on your last meeting and your last discussion, it is further defined before you. But we have to start somewhere and to get an indication of where we are statewide with statutes and compliance, and then they're going to be able to provide you with the updates that are necessary, but also where we're weak and where we may be okay. That's very powerful to us. And as you said, we can then decide whether we can move forward in-house, using other examples, working with other local jurisdictions, or whether we go back to them and lean on them for some things or nothing. So I think you have the flexibility, you have one fee here, and it's not to exceed that, and I think, I think it's the right thing to do.
So real quick, in a nutshell, that would be cleaning it up, making sure that we have, they'll make suggestions for those that are enforcing those, and then at the staff level, if you have to tweak job descriptions to reflect that...
Yes, sir.
That's what you all will do.
Right, and that's the part I'm not looking forward to, because I think once they get that together, I mean, let's be honest, we've been doing it as a rural county with code enforcement. We hire a code enforcement officer, we expect them to know all of the different variations of everything. We do it complaint-driven only, and it's, it's time to look at what we really need going forward to see how do we address that as a more ramped-up service going forward to address the current challenges that we have.
I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove. Make a motion to approve it. Second? Can you second?
I'll second.
Are there any comments?
And when is the definitive timeline that if we approve this, 45 days from authorization, which basically starts tomorrow, that will, they'll come back to us, or come back to staff?
Yeah, it's 45 days, let's be clear while they're in the room. It's 45 days.
Forty-five working days.
It'll be 45, I believe it's a calendar days. I'm comfortable with publicly stating 45 calendar days to get back to administration to discuss with the staff some of the things that were brought up here.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
I'd be with you myself.
Okay. All opposed? Motion pass. Three to one, with Mr. Sol recusing himself. Consideration of Resolution 2025-16 to approve the appointment of Mr. Randy Waite to the Jasper County Planning Appeals Commission.
Yes, sir. This is a simple resolution. We're trying to appoint another member to the Jasper County Council Planning Commission. Jasper County established the planning commission pursuant to Jasper County Code of Ordinances that under the section Standing Boards of Commission, the special committees established, and they create set terms to provide for staggering the terms and numbers. At this time, currently, a vacancy exists on the Jasper County Planning Commission as a result of the resignation of Brent Robinson, whose term is set to expire on December 31st, 2027. Whereas the Jasper County Council desires to appoint Randy Waite as the new member of the Jasper Planning Commission to fulfill the remainder... of the Jasper Planning Commission to fulfill the remainder of the unexpired term of Mr. Robinson. Mr. Waite would be asked to complete the remainder of the four-year term of Mr. Robinson, which expires on December 31st, 2027, and his effective appointment would be 03-03-25.
Is there any discussion?
I believe he's served on in this capacity before, correct? He did a fantastic job and a bunch of dialogue.
Right, when Mr. Waite was there, he was very informative, knew what he was talking about, got into the weeds a lot, so, good appointment. Like to have a motion to approve or disapprove?
Make a motion for approval of Mr. Waite for the planning commission.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Raise their hand. Approved. Public hand, consideration of Resolution 2025-17 of Jasper County Council, persuaded to Section 2-415 of the Jasper County Code of Ordinances Regarding Jasper County SC 250. Committee's request to fund landscaping related to improvements at the Thomas Hayward Cemetery site, authorized in the county administration to accept the submitted bills, bid for such improvements and matters related thereof. This is open for public comment. Ms. Kimberly Burgess?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This resolution is a request from the Jasper County 250 Committee to basically approve the, one of the lowest bids from Southern County Meadow Landscaping for various plant that have been done at Old House Site in preparation of an open house on May 2nd and 3rd, because it is living material and we're in the growing season, it's, you know, time is sort of of the essence to get everything in the ground and, and get it going. I would like to also point out that the funding for this, in the original document that you have, throughout the document, it stated that there would be an $11,000 contribution from the county, and that is, that is an error. This, this will be funded by a different grant from the South Carolina 250 Committee that was issued some time ago or was awarded some time ago. It's called the Old House, it's called the Thomas Hayward slash Old House Site Development, it was issued in 2024, and there are sufficient grant funds to pay for this in total. So I have revised, Mr. Kemp has a copy of the revised document in various whereas's, like the second one, I've deleted a line that talks about the appropriation of matching funds throughout the document, just to be clear, there will not be any matching funds provided from the county for this. We do need to have a public hearing because we are, it is an exception to our procurement process to do, to do this way rather than take it out for bid. Mr. Kooler had already reached out to three local companies, had obtained their bids, and as I said, we're trying to, we'd like to get the plants in the ground as quickly as possible, so that's why we're doing it this way rather than the normal procurement method, which there is a provision in ordinance for that.
Is there, is there a, anybody sign on for public comment?
You don't have it for public hearing.
This would just be a council call, open it. Oh, okay, public comment, is there any public comment? Well, I'll say, this is well-needed, everybody should go down to the Thomas Hayward Cemetery. We were down there Saturday, and it's the epitome of the South, beautiful down there, well-deserved, and in fact, I was surprised how many people showed up, you know, this is a gem of Jasper County. We have other people that say that sports and all that, I think we should be historical, we can have a great historical area here, so anyway. Do we have any other discussion?
Do you have a quick, then you said that it kind of goes anomaly with procurement, that everything we're doing is allowable through our procurement ordinance?
Yes, sir, there is a, Section 2-415 of the ordinance allows for this as long as the council approves and we have a public hearing.
Do I have a motion? To approve or disapprove?
Make a motion for approval.
Second?
Second.
Any comment? All those in favor say aye and raise their hand. Ball eight, passed.
Thank you.
Consideration of Resolution 2025-18 to approve the appointment of Councilman Ral as new board member to the Southern Low Country Regional Board, Soloco. Since I'm the speaker, in Soloco, it's required to have, we have an agreement with Soloco that the chairman and a councilman will be members of the board. I asked Mr. Ral to, if he would like to do it, and he said yes, so this is the motion. I'd like to have a motion to approve or disapprove?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye, raise their hand.
Aye.
Approved. Consideration of Resolution to approve the appointment of Councilman Ral to the Local Area Transportation Study Board. Again, I've asked him to, to be a part of it, he's familiar with his previous, his other positions with this about the safety of the roads and all that, so it's a good fit, and is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for approval for appointment.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Approved. This was kind of funny. Would you mind reading this, would you mind reading the 14?
All right, item 14 is consideration of a resolution 2025-20 to approve the appointment of Chairman Kemp as the ex officio member to the Technical College of the Low Country Board.
And? Is there any discussion?
Any discussion?
I'd like to have a motion.
All right, anyone like to make a motion?
Make a move, make a motion for recommendation to the appointment of the Technical College of Low Country Board Chairman Kemp.
Got a second?
Second. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any agains? Any?
Any partis?
Passed. Thank you very much, sorry about that. Public hearings, ordinances in action, in action items. Consideration of the second reading of Ordinance 2025-03, approving a development agreement for the Delhi Organics Development Property consisting of approximately 223 acres, more or less, more or less owned by the Bellinger Hill Properties LLC in the Bellinger Hill area of Jasper County, South Carolina. Swayed into the South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act in Article 4, Title 20 of the, of the Development Agreement and matters related thereof, did I miss something? This document is to include the agenda in the pack. Okay. This is for the second reading, is there any discussion? Like to have a motion. Mr. Kemp, if I might point out, y'all did see the changes that were brought forward after the last meeting? Yes. I have a representative here, if you have any questions about them. Yes, I do have, thank you for reminding me. On this, when you did the changes, you had density and you talked about residents in there, what does that mean? Before this was, I was understanding that the only thing they could do there was. Or is that in the PDD or is that in the Development Agreement? If you can direct us to an area. The only residents that would be allowed would be in the area that is zoned for rural,
preservation, which is an allowable use in all of the ag, you say, the low intensity
uses. Exhibit B limits by, we talked residential units in Exhibit B.
B?
Yeah, but then again, it said someplace else it was rejected, I mean, you have both in there, which is it? And then, then also it said the reference is B-1, and I can't find B-1. I'm looking at my Exhibit B, the development plan, and I apologize, I want to see the reference.
It's here. And this will go with the PDD and concept plan.
I'm looking for the residential.
Oh, well, I'll still have to have Exhibit B1, then this side, box 7B.
What we attempted to do here was further refine and reduce the amount of allowable uses to restrict anything other than the current agricultural uses and the allowable under the rural preservation areas to mulching and bagging operations that are coincident with the existing operations for the mulching there, so that we couldn't have any other industrial uses or general commercial uses other than those that are directly attended to the mulching and bagging operation. But there are places in there you say residential, that's what's. If there's a, I can search for that, Mr. Scotty, familiar? This is our representative, I think you've seen him several times up here.
Any references of, with the chair members of council, any references specific to residential are related to the activity itself, the mulching, bagging, processing operations, and I don't believe anything intended is separate and apart from that.
That's what I'm trying to say, in use and intensities, but it's the same as the concept plan, the general commercial, the rural preservation.
We'll double check, but I think we've removed anything that would be some, a real subdivision, I think, if that's what you're asking.
That's not, that's not.
That's not, that's not, it would just be, if they wanted to cut out an acre under the rural preservation for farming operations for whatever, they could do that, but not, they wouldn't be allowed to do a residential subdivision. Well, what got me, what I started to see is residential, that, that density, things that replace that, and then all of a sudden it said that you could split stuff off and do, it just got very confusing, maybe it's just me, but I just want to make it clear.
And Mr. Chair as well, under excluded uses under Exhibit B, it really defines sort of very clearly that the intent of the activity here is in support of those mulching, bagging, composting operations for the existing farm, but if we need to touch.
But that's what I was trying to say is, in one section you say residential, and there you're limited. Why would you have the residential in there, just?
Conceptually speaking, you could have a situation where let's say a worker might preside at, let's say, something on the site, that, that, in that sense could be a residential activity, but that's in support of the operations there.
And the reference to Exhibit B1, we can clarify that, that's a reference to Exhibit B1 of the PUD concept plan, the concept plan for the PUD ordinance, which is intended to this is referenced in other places, so we'll clarify that, that it's the PUD exhibit. And the reason I bring this up is I worked on the farms, a lot of farms, and what the farmers were doing was essentially what we were doing, we were trying to do, is they would build housing for the workers. So they had 200 apartments on some of these farms, and I'm just, would that be part of this, because it's part of the? I don't think they could under the concept plan of the PUD, or PDD.
We don't have that set for.
I understand, it's just, it's just me thinking about it and answering the question, that's all. I'm sure nobody down here would, but there are some big farms up there, so. We'll start through and look at that again before we bring the third reading, the most, the biggest changes we made were to address the hours of operation, the noise, dealing with making certain that we're not counting, so I take your responsibility for stormwater or other roads out there, and I left off one of the.
And then also, also clarify, there is a mobile home on the site where a individual does live and work there as well, so we try to be very transparent about operations as they stand right now. But there's no intent of some.
I never worry about, I don't think I worry about now, I worry about later, you know, too often that we set something up and it's good intentions and all that, and then all of a sudden, we're stuck. You can go up to the northern part of Jasper County, you can, every day I hear something about one of the roads not doing, not there, and the HOA didn't fail and all that, so all I'm trying to do is do my due diligence, so. And just one more thing, is it total eight, something about subdividing or dividing it, and is this whole thing limited to 120, the acreage, at 223 acres?
223 acres is full property, more or less, as described in the land description from the deed, that, that'll be an exhibit to the development agreement itself.
Okay, that's all I have. Is there anybody, anybody else? I have a question. Sir? Ron?
One more question.
I do have a question, Ron, so you have the work plan and everything, everything worked out, are there any concerns if you want to bring it forward to council on the process of order?
No, no concerns at this point, I've appreciated the county administrator as well as the county attorney, Ms. Wagner, we've met in person as well as had discussions via email about this, and I've appreciated the process that we're going through, talking about what would become the final document, and I, I think the process, that Mr. Dale is here as well as I will.
But I was appointed, what, he said he didn't like anything? He wants his ass.
We'd like to get, we'd like to get the, the second reading.
And there's a reasonable question, you answered it.
But we, but we appreciate the process of working together with respect to that. I think the document you have before you certainly reflected by our collaborative reference.
Pretty fair. Going along.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion? Ral, Sol. Like to have a motion to approve or disapprove the second reading.
I'd like to make a motion that we consider proof of the second reading of Ordinance 2025-03.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any comments? If none, I'd like to have a vote of positive, negative, or positive, negative. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. All against? Passed. Okay. Public hearing and consideration of the second reading of an ordinance of 0-2025-05, authorizing the executive execution of a fee in lieu of ad valorem tax brevience by an end between Jasper County, South Carolina, and Project Center with respect to certain economic development property in the county, proving, providing for the payment of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, proving, providing for special source revenue credits and other matters related thereof. Mr. Teller? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, as this matter was discussed in workshop early this afternoon, Mr. Ray Romano Parker Poe assisted with that presentation to explain what you have before you tonight, deals with a project that we're excited about, 500-plus jobs, very well-paying jobs, average income is, salary is expected to be at $60,000, it's in Southern Hardyville. We would like, if you see fit, to pass this tonight, to pass it with the amendments that we discussed at the work session that clarify the special source revenue credit is 50% to this project, which is 10% more than the underlying SSRC, or underlying FLO agreement in Malta County Park, which is the result of the splitting off of the project, that also clarifies that the clawbacks, in case they don't meet their estimated amounts, accurately reflect the percentage of SSRC that comes to this particular project, which will have a third reading, but we wanted to make the council aware of, work, it has been a work in progress in the last week or so with some changes that. work, it has been a work in progress in the last week or so with some changes that were brought about, but the fact that we have an owner and a lessy developer is going to be bringing in millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars of equipment, and that's why there, with the jobs, is the justification of the extra 10%. And the staff say, oh, you didn't have the benefit of that, but they're mostly technical changes to reflect that in about six different places in the, in the ordinance, or the actual FLO agreement. It'd be the request that council, after the public hearing, move this on at second reading. I'd like to open up the council to a public hearing, are there any, did anybody sign up for the public hearing?
Yes.
No sign up for a public hearing.
No? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to talk about the Project Center? Hearing none, is there any discussion?
No discussion, he answered everything I needed in the workshop earlier.
Like to have a motion to approve or disapprove? Make a motion to approve. I'd like to have a second.
Second.
Any comment? All those in favor, both aye and raise your hand, any negative? Passed. Consideration of the first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County as to the transfer, transfer of two properties located at 345 Gassyore Road bearing Jasper County tax map numbers oh two oh 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 three oh oh six and oh two oh 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 one oh two from the rural preservation zoning district to the residential zoning district on the Jasper County official zoning map. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, chairman and council members, this is a request for a zoning map amendment to have a property designated as residential. The subject property consists of 11.35 acres in total of both of the properties. The property is located at 354 Gassyore Road in Pineland, both properties are currently zoned rural preservation. The intent is to combine the subject properties with two adjacent parcels and then reconfigure the four original parcels to five parcels. The adjacent parcels are owned by the applicant and they're zoned residential. The Jasper County Land Development Regulations prohibit creating new parcels in different zoning districts, so the proposal would create a split zoning, which we cannot approve. The future land use map identifies this area as rural conservation, the rural conservation areas seek to protect and promote the character of Jasper County that largely exists outside the municipalities, the adjacent zoning of the parcels are rural preservation or residential and adjacent land uses are residential and vacant property. Gassyore Road is a county maintained dirt road. The planning commission has reviewed this application at their meeting on February 11th, 2025, and they recommend approval to have the property designated as residential.
Any discussion, Mr. Biggie's? No. There are Villa, Mr. Saul's? Mr. Rowl.
Just to break it down, should everybody understand exactly what we're looking at?
Yep. I can bring up a map, I think would be helpful too, if you'd like to see it.
I got the map here.
You've got the map, okay, so, um. We have, this particular property owner and applicant owns four parcels, two are zoned residential, two are zoned rural preservation. They want to reconfigure the four properties and the five properties, there's an existing road that already accesses the property, and, um, they want to make five parcels, but that would create split zoning, and we're not allowed to create, we're not allowed to approve a plat that would create a split zoning, so the request is to have the two parcels that in total only, um, make up 11 acres, they would like to have that rezoned residential, so all four properties would be residential.
Mr. Rowl, you said.
Does that help?
It does, and then I guess the intent is to sell them or whatever, or family land, or however it happens, it'll be four parcels, or five parcels.
Five parcels, yes.
Was this the one that they were going to have a family, they wanted family to get together or something, or is it something?
Four sisters or something.
Maybe I'm confused, there was one that, there was one on the planning commission that they wanted to combine.
I think that might be the Stokes Bluff property.
Okay.
Property at Stokes Bluff, and it's separated by the road, and we'll get into that one next, or either the next one.
Okay. Do I have, is there any other discussion? Do I have a motion to approve or disapprove?
Make a motion, we consider first reading.
Second. First reading, comment? All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed. Consideration of first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County as to transfer property located at 139 Hartwell Avenue bearing Jasper County tax mem, tax map number oh eight oh oh three oh 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 one nine from the mixed business zoning district to general commercial zoning district on the Jasper County official zoning map. Ms. Wagner.
This is a zoning map amendment requesting to have a property designated as general commercial. The property consists of .96 acres and is located at 139 Hartwell Avenue. The property is currently zoned mixed business and is part of a commercial subdivision known as Argent Business Park. The property is developed with a commercial building that was built for flex space. The end user intends to use the space as a banquet hall, which is not allowed in mixed business, however, it is allowed in the general commercial zoning district. The property was originally zoned general commercial, however, that rezoning, we, there was a rezoning to have that property changed to mixed business at the end of 2016. The future land use map identifies this area as a commercial node, which is appropriate for businesses, offices, retail, and multifamily use. The adjacent parcels are zoned general commercial, mixed business, and rural preservation. Adjacent land uses are commercial, development, and vacant property, and there's multifamily apartments nearby. The property is accessed by Hartwell Avenue, which is a private maintained road serving Argent Business Park. Hartwell Avenue is located off of Argent Boulevard, which is a minor arterial road and is maintained by the state. The planning commission reviewed this application at their meeting on February 11th, 2025, and they recommend approval to have the property designated as general commercial.
Is there any discussion? Van Giefen?
No.
John Zilla? Mr. Saul?
We have a couple of quick questions, the, with this going from a mixed use to where it was kind of a shell building before, going to a banquet hall use, do we have adequate parking, do we have things of that nature that won't conflict with the other businesses around?
There is parking there, um, the staff would be happy to take a second look at that, just to make sure that there's enough spaces, because I do believe, and I didn't realize it at planning commission, I think there is a unit that is rented out for employment opportunity, like a temporary employment agency. And we have the site plan on file, so I'll take a look at those and report to you at your next meeting, if that's okay, we've set it up for a public hearing already, we've noticed the adjacent property owners, and we placed a sign on the property. If you'd be willing to give us first reading tonight, I'll bring back an update and make certain, we'll just go back and look at that.
And at the planning commission, did they talk about hours of operation or any of that?
They did not, um, right now it's, it's zoned mixed business, so it allows an industrial type, light industrial type use currently.
That's all the questions I have.
I still have, I have questions about parking, they have no parking, except, except they have a big ad, I guess, for rental, they rent, they rent parking spaces for boats, whatever, I don't consider that parking that they could use for banquet, because it's, we never know if it's going to be full or not.
No, that's a different parcel, so that's part, lot one.
I understand, that's on the next, but there's only.
Some parking in front of.
Only about eight spaces there, right there, in front, I mean, I went down, I come, I went down there and there's not that much parking for a banquet, if you have 100 people, 20 people, 30 people, you're gonna have, they better come two to three or four in a car, I think you have to look at that.
We'll take a look at that, I certainly thought there was more needs bases, but.
Well, there was not very many, if you can just look, if you look on it.
There's nine from the aerial.
Nine, right from the aerial, it's nine, and it just creates a, how can they have a banquet? And how big is the office, you know, is it the office, what is the office? And why did they change from general commercial to the mixed business?
That was years ago, before this developer bought these three properties, and it was, the owner at the time had, he had interests that would be, they could fall under light industrial to do light cabinet making, cutting granite, marble. All of that didn't work out, but that was the intent of the rezoning previously, to go to mixed business.
Could they have stayed general commercial and done the same thing?
I know that both RV parking is allowed in general commercial, um, is also allowed in mixed business, and then the other lot, lot two, I'll have to go and look at those uses. I think the only fear of taking away mixed business for lot one and lot two is that then it does eliminate that possibility for the light industrial uses, like a manufacturing.
Do you know how many, how big the space is, and how many people are going to be there?
All I'm saying that is that that's going to be a lot of, if you have a banquet there, you have a lot of traffic, and that's Argent Boulevard, and when you, what'd you say it was, a minor arterial?
A minor arterial.
Well, I'll tell you what, somebody should go down there and change that.
Well, that's how it's classified, but, um, so we will take a look at that, I'll have the answer for you at, when we come back on the 17th, and if you don't like it, you can table it or vote against it or whatever, it's your choice, um, so, I would just say some of the banquets things may take place at different hours when the businesses aren't operating.
Would it be who of us to give it back to the planning commission for another one, with all these questions?
If that's what you want to do, you're the council, I, I just say that because we have scheduled the public hearing, and so for your next meeting, letters have already went out, and the properties are, I'm still.
May I ask? Just one, Mr. Tetter. Sir. What would you say if we wanted that to the planning commission? We do it now? My best thought on this at this moment is, you've got a very real concern about a particular item, and you need some answers to those questions, you need those answers at second reading, no later than that. I don't know that it would be harmful to the council if you saw fit to give it a first reading with a direction to get these questions that you have answered for your second reading and public hearing, and based on what you hear at that second re, second hearing, you can send it back to the planning commission for their concern of that particular point and keep moving forward, or without prejudice to stopping it at any time.
That was a question, if I send it back to, if we send it back to the planning commission after the second reading, do we have to start over again?
No, sir, the statute says that we have to have a public hearing before we have a final reading on this. It's nothing to say that we can't have another public hearing after it goes back to the planning commission on whatever changes or recommendations they may get at that time. So, many, many, I think if you're asking me, can we make substantive changes after second reading?
No, no, what I'm asking is, let's say we're going to go to second reading, we have the public comment, right? We've, we feel this needs more work on, can, if we send it back to the.
Yes, sir, you could certainly table it for a further recommendation from the planning commission at that particular time, give them the opportunity to look at it and make a further recommendation back to the council and bring it back over to table when you get that.
And it wouldn't be the, we wouldn't have to go back to first reading?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Azil.
So it seems to me what's before us is just changing the, what they can do there. That's not going to be, that's not going to affect what you decide when they want to come in, if there's not enough parking, you're not going to approve it. If the 49 acres doesn't allow the additional parking for what they want to do, regardless of what zone we put it in, you're going to disprove it. And so I think all we're here tonight trying to get is the zoning changed, and I don't, if we, not wrong about this, but if we start adding the things that would come in later, what they may or may not do, you're not going to allow it anyway.
So I do think the parking is a legitimate, a legitimate concern, the only thing I do hate is to have people show up at the next meeting for a public hearing, just to say we're not going to have a public hearing, so you don't even have to take action at the next meeting, you know, just have.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to echo the same thing, if you have it already advertised, I think that you can address your potential concerns by, by giving it first reading and then addressing this at the next meeting.
Well, I, the reason I ask that is, I was in the assumption that if we, anytime we bring that first to the planning commission, it has to start all over again.
Yes, sir, I, I think that, especially when you're looking at clarification items, I don't think that constitutes a redo if you.
Okay. And I might assist Mr. Azil, I think what you're getting at is a planning concept that a council doesn't look at a particular item in front of it for the zoning, you look at everything that comes into the zoning under that designation as a possibility, recognizing that as you're saying, any particular application still has to meet the specific requirements for whatever the particular use is.
If I would have said it, then I would have said it like that.
Thank you. Mr. Van Giefen.
No, good. And to, to not dispute, but one of the reasons that he gave for this change was the banquet, right, that, so he opened it up.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's all.
That doesn't mean that you can't take into account that he has a particular use that may or may not work.
Right.
In looking at it.
And when we do it to general commercial, we open another ball of worms, because he can, he may not want to do banquet, right?
Possibility.
Right, possibility, so we have to be very careful. So anyway, I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or postpone. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, I'll address your concern by the next meeting.
Consideration, excuse.
This next meeting will be public hearing only, or both?
Both. We can, it depends.
Okay.
We'll put it down for both, if you choose to table it, you can.
Or consent that.
Yeah, or whatever you want to do.
Consideration of first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County as, so as to transfer a property located on 594 Stokes Bluff Landing Road bearing Jasper County tax number oh oh three oh oh, oh oh one oh oh nine from the rural preservation and residential zoning district to the residential zoning district of Jasper County official zoning map.
This is a zoning map amendment request to have a property designated as residential, the subject. The subject property consists of a total of thirty-eight acres and it's located at five nine four Stokes Bluff Road. The property is currently split zone, rural preservation and residential. The property is separated by Stokes Bluff Road, essentially creating two parcels of land, but there's only one tax map number. The portion of the property on the north side of Stokes Bluff Road is zoned rural preservation and it's approximately fifteen and a half acres, while the portion of the property on the south side of Stokes Bluff Road is zoned residential and it's approximately twenty-three acres. The purpose is to subdivide the property, creating two separate parcels of land, one on the north side of the road and one on the south side of the road. Um, the future land use map identifies this area as resource conservation. The rural conservation areas fall alongside the rivers that flank the east and west of Jasper County. These areas are dominated by hydric soils which are frequently associated with wetlands. In addition, these soils are very poorly suited to support septic system. These areas should be used primarily for conservation and recreation. Any development should be low in impact. The adjacent parcels are zoned residential and rural preservation. To the rear of the property, um, is where the, uh, rural preservation is. Basically, everything along the roadway alongside of it is residential. Adjacent land uses are residential on vacant property. Stokes Bluff Road is a two-lane state maintained highway classified as a limited local road. The planning commission reviewed this application at their February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, a meeting and they recommended approval to have the property designated as residential.
Do I have a discussion? Mr. Allen, Mr. Solz.
What is the intention of the property once this rezones, right?
So if you look at the map, um, that's included with the staff report, we've highlighted both sides of the road in blue, that's the total property. But one side is residential and the other side is rural preservation. So, um, the intent is gonna be to create the two parcels, which it appears to be two parcels, but it's not. And, um, make the other one residential. There's a lot of wetlands there to begin with, especially toward the rear of the property. Um, it's just a difference of, um, the lot size, you know, is a half acre. They don't intend to create any subdivision or, um, do anything like that, but, um, the lot width along the road, it's twice as much in rural preservation as what's required in residential.
Thank you. Mr. Azil.
I'd like to hear your recommendation.
Recommend approval.
There's a lot of wetlands.
There's a lot of wetlands there. So this will not be, um, used for any type of heavy impact at all, or like I said, it's not intended for a residential subdivision or anything.
I know on that road, it's Jasper County and then halfway down becomes Hampton County. I know that there's very high land, very sandy land, and then there's very low land. So yes, I mean, they're gonna be very limited just on the topography of what they can actually do there.
That's right.
No. It's amazing when I looked at that, you know, rural preservation is away from the river and the residential is close to the river. You would think it was just the opposite, right?
Right.
So I, I think, I think what I had more problem with this if it was the opposite way. And this is rural preservation to residential, it's close to the river.
Yeah.
Especially with the water, the way it is there. Anyway, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to have a motion to approve or disapprove.
Make a motion for approval for rezoning.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, or comments, excuse me? No comment, and I'd like to have a vote. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
All against? Hearing none, pass. Okay, uh, council, should we, administrator report?
I'll just give that.
Did I do one more?
Twenty.
Twenty, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Consideration of third reading of ordinance O dash two oh two five dash oh four to amend Article two point one point one of the Jasper County Land Development Regulation. Exempt subdivision limiting the number of parcels that can be subdivided from a single parcel of land when using the state's exemption to four individual parcels to define an existing street and existing easement invoking application of the pending ordinance doctrine and other matters related thereof. Ms. Wagner.
This proposed ordinance seeks to limit the number of parcels that can be subdivided from a single parcel of land using the state's exemption. Uh, the limitation would be to four parcels. The state's exemption allows for parcels that are five acres and greater where no new street is involved to be subdivided. Currently, the Jasper County's land development regulations do not limit the number of parcels that can be subdivided from a single parcel of land using the state's exemption. Um, Jasper County has struggled with this and people taken advantage of this, um, for a number of years, but what we're seeing is, um, large properties being subdivided. Um, and when I say large properties, I'm talking about a hundred acres or more, just, you know, based on the five acre rule, that's twenty, um, pro, twenty lots, some cases are even more than that, but those should be identified as a major subdivision where there, there should be community facilities, open space, sidewalks, things to serve that community. Um, the county's, uh, ordinance states that the exempt subdivision is the division of land into parcels of five acres or more where each parcel abuts an existing road right of way or access easement recorded prior to January first, two thousand and eighteen. Um, the state's exemption states the division of land into parcels of five acres or more where no new street is involved and plats of these exceptions must be received as information by a planning agency which will indicate that fact on the plat. So we're proposing to amend Article two one one of the land development regulations, paragraph B, to state the division of land into parcels of five acres or more where no new street or easement is involved, provided that out of any single tract of land, parcel of lot of land existing as a distinct tax parcel as of July first, twenty twenty-four, no more than four such parcels may be created within a four-year period. I'm sorry, within a five-year period. Um, we're also adding a note to define the existing streets or easement. They must meet the county regulations as outlined in Article seven one. And then we have two minor changes we're proposing to add under, um, um, paragraph G, number six and number seven, which is you, is just to add that any public acquisition of land for a right of way or drainage easement or any lot or parcel created there from, or a parcel of land that's proposed to be used as a site for a utility substation, power line easement or right of way pumping station, that those types are also exempt subdivisions. We had a first reading, um, December second, twenty twenty-four. We had second reading and public hearing January sixth, twenty twenty-five. And at the January twenty-first meeting, this was tabled. Um, Councilman Van Geest asked for some time to look into this. And I would just like to point out, I think Mr. Bentley was referring maybe to this ordinance when he spoke. This ordinance is different than what he's trying to do. This would only affect the state's exemption of the five acres and greater. It's just putting a limitation on it. It's not asking that they're not allowed. It's just limit them, limiting them to how many can be done before it's considered a major subdivision.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Brown?
So if you put four parcels together as a compound, four or five acre parcels, explain that to me.
Okay, so, um, using the state's exemption, that's where there's already a road. Maybe you own twenty-five acres of land on a county road. You could come in and.
Well, maybe it's access to the property, just to one of the properties and you gotta make a road to get back there.
So that, so when you need to make a road, that is really considered a minor subdivision. We already have that on the books.
Could that be changed to P O A? And that, well, that's taken care of by, if the road was built by the developer or the person who bought it for parcels.
Under the minor subdivision, it can be done. We're, we always ask.
And then they can maintain it themselves within their P O A?
Yes, under the minor subdivision. Yes, sir. So if, if you have some woods and you have, let's just say fifty acres of land, you can't just cut a road in and go in there and call it a minor, uh, an exempt subdivision. The state law says it's for, um, a single parcel of land where there is not a need for a road or a street.
Right.
That's what it says. And, um, that's not the issue we're really having. The issue we're having is a hundred and fifty acres, a hundred acres, a hundred and twenty acres being busted up and twenty something lots, properties sold. We get the road maintenance agreement, people agree to that, but once that property is sold, you can, that no one's coming out to maintain that road except the people that live there. And it's just, if you're creating a subdivision like that and you're making money, you need to spend some money through the major subdivision rules and make sure that drainage is addressed, roads are addressed, um, the people who buy there, they deserve to have better.
So it won't affect, so that would fall underneath a family compound then, if you had four?
No, because that's already allowed in a minor subdivision and you can create a road. Um, our minimum is six inches of stone.
Stone, so wide enough for.
But you can build that under a, um, minor subdivision.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Azil. Are you finished, excuse me, are you finished?
Yeah. So in that scenario where they buy parcels, they sell property, they put in a road and then they leave. And the other, they come in and put a new road in and they leave. The county doesn't take over ownership or responsibility of that road anyway, so it's still gonna be a simple problem, just a longer time down the road.
I think there's, there's an issue of having the road standard associated with the subdivision. It's a little more strict, Mr. Azil.
And the more density you put on that private road, the quicker it's, you know, gonna have potholes and other issues.
What we've tried to do over the last years is make certain, and I won't even mention the name of the developer that did this caused the city problems in the decades past, but to have a standardized road maintenance agreement that you have to bring in as part of this subdivision process, major or minor. It doesn't apply when it's a subdivision and that is putting everybody on notice. Y'all are gonna be responsible for this, don't come knocking on the county's door. You've got to enforce yourself. It requires the developer to be responsible or create a not-for-profit with bylaws and everybody gets to be a member of it, you can self-assess and do all things. So we, we try to do that, well, we'll try, we require that as part of a major or minor subdivision. So we try to cover that. This is a, um, this is loophole, um, that they try and use. And the biggest problem has been a timber road is not a street. It does not allow us to get fire trucks, ambulances, deputies down there and, and it's not to our standards. So that's one of the things we're trying to address, that with the definition that you see of what an existing street is, which is meeting our seven point one standards. It says if you're gonna have something more than X number of feet wide, you're gonna have to turn around at the end so you get a fire truck in and out so that you don't, your ambulance is boxed in, those types of things, which is what you really need to do if you're gonna have multiple people down there that can get hurt.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's kind of interesting, we talked about code enforcement, but as I see it, this kind of provision, try to clamp down on this, is, is preventing future code enforcement issues. If you, if you don't take a stand on this, you're gonna have more and more of these sort of illegal subdivisions popping up.
Wasn't this, I'm gonna go out, wasn't there a, an ordinance, not since I've been here, but before, that we tried to have a ordinance for roads? You had two or three buildings on a property that have a certain type of road?
Yes, she has, Ms. Wagner has her own standards, but this kind of bypasses all of that and puts her in a bind because there's not a limit currently set up.
And under the state's exemption, they're exempt from land development regulations.
Excuse me, Mr., one other comment, I didn't catch this, it's, it's almost hung with a comment. I would recommend that the word commentary be deleted if you're going to do this and that section, it has brackets, it says commentary, excuse me, with a definition. Just take out the word commentary because it's superfluous, it is the requirement.
Mr. Solz? Mr. Brown?
Um, nothing at this time.
Any further discussion? I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove?
Make a motion, we consider the third reading, approval of third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four.
Second?
Second.
Any comment?
Would we want to remove the word commentary? Is that appropriate to this motion?
Or I amend my motion to remove the word commentary from there.
So we have it from, do we have a second on that?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand. All those against, say no.
No.
Okay. Motion pass.
Thank you.
Ms. Graves report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'll try to keep this short for you. The first item I had on there was concerning the recent Claudine Airport and that was the runaway link justification study that we referred to. Uh, it's been ongoing for some time. I understand it is complete and there are a number of parties that would be involved in presenting that to you. They have proposed a date of April the seventh, your meeting of April the seventh. Mr. Chairman, if that'd be appropriate, um, we could have a workshop prior to your meeting, just as you did this evening, have, uh, both Holt Consulting and Ardua, that was the team that did the study, present the results. And I think it'd be appropriate if we invite, uh, the airport commission to your meeting so everybody hears the results of the study at one time. Uh, nobody knows what it's gonna say, so let's figure out, um, get all in the same room and you have the opportunity to hear it, ask questions about it and then, uh, wouldn't have to take any action, obviously, anybody wouldn't have to take any action on that.
So you want a workshop prior to the April seventh?
April seventh, if you would, uh, if you would be okay with that and I can try to set that up and then also invite the airport commission to that meeting.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah. Is that okay with everyone else? Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, number two is initial workshops. I continue to do that. We know we have a lot of workshops to do. I think the chairman's, uh, most pressing one was a workshop on the budget preparation. And so we have, uh, aligned a staff and can offer, you have a meeting on the seventeenth, your next meeting, we can offer the eighteenth, nineteenth or twentieth. I just wanted to let those resonate with you, uh, anytime of the day or evening that you would like. But we think that that's, uh, obviously the priority of the workshops that we have.
That's the March, April.
Yes, sir.
So what will happen is, uh, with each one of us would look at our calendars and give an email to Mr. Forward and then he can set it up. Is that okay? Yep.
Thank you, sir. And then the final thing that I had for you this evening, Ms. Heather Rath is here to give you a quick update on the Louis, I'm sorry, Levy sewer funding request that's been made. She has a request of, uh, council, um, concerning that matter.
Good evening, Chairman and Council, Heather Rath for the record on behalf of Jasper County. Last fall, I let you all know that we had completed, um, a successful application with the. Last fall, I let you all know that we had completed a successful application with the EPA and with our partners who are here in the room to support us. From the E O C, we have James Williams as our community partner, and our technical partner from Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority, we have Charlie Stone. I'm asking today for us to send a letter to our federal delegation in support of this EPA grant. This is at the federal level, and unfortunately, we are not seeing the movement on the EPA grant, both positive or negative, that we expected to to get at this point. Our delegation sits in a very prime role in some of these committees, and I'm asking for this to be moved forward today instead of waiting a couple of weeks. This is because we're in the current process of reconciliation on the fiscal year twenty five budget. Very time sensitive that if we want to send this letter to the delegation, that we send it in haste, like very quickly. So I have copies of a letter, if I could present them to you all, if that would be appropriate. Our two key points that we're asking for are that the leadership presses the EPA for answers and ensures that the funding is secure for Jasper County.
Mr. Chairman, we're all totally just seeking general consensus from the council that the council's in favor of the chairman writing a letter to the federal delegation.
I did a heck of a job.
Thanks. As you can see, there's some typos on it, because I, so there'll be some edits, but that is just the general consensus on what we're asking. And I do have Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority and E O C will send a copy letter very similar to ours once we take the lead on this, as we're the lead on the project. And again, I'm sorry to bring this on you all so quick, but we didn't know that the Senate and the House were gonna get along so well last week at the federal level and move things along so quickly. So we're really in crunch time.
Any discussion?
I think it's a good idea. Definitely need to.
I think so, yeah.
Get our seed, so.
And maybe we'll benefit correctly by it.
Yes, yes.
They need it.
And again, this is just to give background, that EPA grant was for sewer infrastructure in the Levy Limehouse community.
Right. And this is the one where you, they also have house repair and all that. There's a lot of stuff.
That's correct. And so the E O C is our community partner on that, and then, oh, sorry, and then Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority is our technical partner, and the total hookup would be two hundred and thirteen homes in the Levy Limehouse area.
Okay. Do I have to create a motion or?
No, sir, I don't think so. There's just general consensus that that's a good idea, and we'll move forward with getting those corrected for your signature, Mr. Chairman. And I also wanted to tell you, I had nothing further on my report unless, of course, you have any questions of me.
Do I have consensus?
I think it's a good idea, isn't it?
Okay. When will us be ready?
Tonight.
Night?
Tonight.
No pressure.
I do a great job, don't I? Anyway, council members, comments and discussion. Mr. Ralston.
All right. First, I'd like to thank Hardyville for allowing us to to use their facility tonight to conduct our council meeting with our commitment to try to go abroad every quarter to further bring the county meetings to the people. Thank you to those folks. Secondly, I did attend the Soloco meeting last week, I believe. Both chairmen's from Beaufort Jasper County, they did make presentations to that meeting, and I'm sure Chairman Kemp will speak more on that here shortly, but it was a good meeting, and I look forward to representing the county on that as appointed tonight. We did have a good meeting with, individually with staff, with administration as it pertained to some of the zoning things that are out there. We did have a, like I said, it was a good meeting. I think I took every minute of my hour and then took some of other people's time too. So I apologize, sorry for talking so much, but it was a good meeting. Myself and Councilman Van Geeson did have a roundtable town hall type meeting with the Hilton Head Lakes, Magwall communities. We did discuss with them some of their concerns for Jasper County, and it was a well-attended, well-open dialogue meeting that we had with them. I did have some folks from the airport reach out with some of their concerns. I did get them towards staff, but definitely, as I pushed it to the administrator, hopefully they got some of those things answered. But one thing that I would like to ask as far as like with the airport, I've had a bunch of folks reach out to me. They attended some type of car show airport thing, I guess at Beaufort Executive recently, and wanted to know if we can start pushing towards having something like that at the airport, some type of of those type of events. I'm not exactly sure what those entail, but I think they said it was well-attended. Maybe something to look into. Other than that, as we look into the state right now, we've got a lot of things as it pertains to a lot of wildfires that are happening throughout the state. It was a very busy weekend this past weekend. And one thing that I would like to maybe task the administrator, Chief Wells, but is possibly after we slow down a little bit, is get a representative from the forestry commission to come and talk to us about the actual benefits of outdoor burning, why we do it, maybe do a community event, because a lot of people have a negative stereotype on that, but it's very, very crucial and beneficial to the reduction of fuels and things that we can, as well as the wildlife and other things out there. So it's, one of those agricultural things is kind of frowned upon by certain individuals or certain folks that move here that don't do that where they're from, but I think it would be something good to reach out and see if we could do something, maybe in a community platform somewhere. Other than that, that's all I have at this time.
Mr. Sol.
Thank you. Project Salmon, heard a lot of conversation on that over the past several weeks, and I think Thursday's announcement ceremony is gonna be special with the governor coming and what that's gonna bring as far as economic development opportunities and job creation for the community here, good paying jobs and benefits. It's just exciting to see that coming to fruition. Manufacturer, that's gonna be the largest economic development project in the history of the county there. So that's exciting and a lot of work from a lot of different people have gone into that. So congratulations to everybody on making that a reality. Did speak with Niva Newsom, who's the project manager for Highway four sixty-two today. They started back on the repavement process this morning. They had a some, little bit of a learning curve there. I think the, according to D O T standards, the flag person is supposed to stop and go every five to seven minutes. Well, what they didn't realize is there's thousands of cars coming from Hampton County, Jasper County, headed to Okati, Bluffton, Beaufort for work, Hilton Head. And every, you know, they'd let them go for five minutes, and it was backed up all the way to Cusahatchee and into Ridgeland, but when they were letting cars come that were headed north from from Beaufort County, it was like forty cars. And I told her, I said, well, a little common sense. She goes, yeah, but the guys get in trouble if they don't follow guidelines. But she did, and I gotta brag on her, made the effort, and they're gonna be more accommodating to allowing the traffic flow pattern from Jasper and Hampton going that way starting tomorrow. So, and they may have done that even this afternoon, but I got a bunch of calls on that. So hopefully in about three weeks, that project will be completed. Wanted to recognize Mr. C M Dancer for Conservationist for a Year from the Jasper Soul and Water Conservation Event Saturday night. I did speak to his son via phone, and just real, real excited, what a great honor for him. And again, a good job to county staff and everybody there and engineering, working on the J R Y B volunteer park for the youth baseball deal out there, and that's exciting to see what's coming there, and thank you for all the effort in that regard too. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Razzola.
So last week, myself and Andy attended a function across the river there at the Trade Center, and it was the Georgia Forest Authority putting on a pretty big event, three, four hundred people. And what they were talking about is their expansion, and they're expanding largely. Of course, we're gonna be impacted by some of that in this area, but they're always expanding, but they're on the move right now. I just wanted everybody to know what what all was said there, and I think I've got some pamphlets, and I've already sent this out to council members, but basically, they grow and we're gonna be impacted. That's all I have on that.
I'm sorry. Mr. Van Geeson.
So I did attend two town halls last week, and I find those pretty productive, and I enjoy those a lot. I did one with with Chairman Kemp, and as the chairman, the vice chairman, Ralston had said, we had one at Hilton Head Lakes also, so. And I enjoy those and like to do a lot more of them. We do, I do have a thing we're putting together for for all the animals here in Jasper County. We're doing a committee where we're bringing together several different counties, bringing in all the owners or principals of all the rescues in our area, one o'clock on Friday at the council chambers, so we can kind of sit down, talk about the ordinances, what we need to do, how we can be more on the same page with each other. And I think there's gonna be some good things come out of that. For one, I know we need to change some state laws. Dogfighting is is a misdemeanor in South Carolina. It's not a felony. I think that's something we need to be changed at state level. So there's a lot of things we're gonna be looking at Friday and talking about, and I'm excited about it. And I think that's about it, so thank you.
Up to me. I gave the, a presentation, my first presentation as county chairman to Jasper County Soloco. I want to thank Mr. Fulgrim for helping me out. It was just, he, he had the bullet points and I just put and, you know, all that. Anyway, I went to the Association of Counties in Columbia to the county chairman session. Learned a lot, found out that we all have the same problems. Roads, 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 right? Litter, litter, litter. We all have the same problem. So that leads me to believe that what we've got to do is we've got to start looking at Hampton and Beaufort and getting together and becoming a voice in the state. We are a powerful group in the whole country, and we all have the same problems. Soloco can only do so much. It's up to the elected officials. So I am, part of my job now is to get to the, to the delegations and get more involved. I attended the Fire Rescue Award banquet for the fire. And I don't know, I've always said that we should be more involved. So the last two times, I got invited to something at nine thirty Sunday morning, right? Had to get up for that, work around my church. The second one, which was the banquet, nearly froze to death, you know? I think that's somebody giving back, trying to get eaten, but anyway. I chaired the Transportation Tax Advisory Meeting. We had a good choice there. We're trying to be open as possible. The citizens of Jasper County have given us the authority to invest in our roads, the safety, as for safety and for growth. And I want to thank them immensely. And we'll, we will do everything in our power to make sure that everyone knows what we're doing with their money, their investment. I attended this S C two fifty meeting, which is a revolution. I participated in the George Moss chapter of Sons of American Revolution at Thomas Hayward Gravesite, where I just got kills with the beauty of that place. Just remember, next year is gonna be two hundred and fifty years, is that right? Right? And we have to do something in this county. We have a chance to do something. We don't have one odd thing that we do in this county. And I'm even saying that we should look at having something at the airport, fireworks, everything. Just have a grand time. I don't know if we can do it, but I think something we should look like that to bring unity to this county. And lastly, congratulations to the six graduates from the S C Fire Academy and Destri Semi, is that her name?
Stemi.
Semi?
Destri Semi.
For her achievement in having the highest grade point average in the firefighter two candidate program. She got an award, but awards mean nothing, just the idea that she was the highest and she's working in Jasper County. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And lastly, I want to thank Hardyville for allowing us to be here, and we'll be here next quarter again. Thank you very much. And I want just one last thing, welcome back, Mr. Wade. I worked with him quite a bit in the planning commission. I think he was a good thing. He had some good questions. So, anyway. So now we're gonna go into executive session. Executive session, a public body may hold a meeting close to the public for one of the more following reasons. Two, to go to the discussion, negotiations incidental to the proposed contract arrangements and proposed purchase or sale of property. The receipt of legal advice where the legal advice related to pending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims or position of the public agency and other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim, threat, or potential claim litigation, Freedom of Information Act. Do I have a motion? Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion when going to executive session to discuss items that the chairman read out.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye and raise their hand. Anybody opposed? Go into executive session.